Good evening, everybody. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the date of February 25, 2020. It's now 7:00 p.m., and we are in Carver Town Hall, Room Number 3 this evening. The first matter on our agenda is the minutes from our last meeting that need to be approved. That would have been for date January 21, 2020. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at those minutes prepared by our clerk and edited by your steward?
Yes.
Yes. And Alan, have you?
Yes.
Great. Does anybody have any amendments, modifications, or changes that they would like to make to those meeting minutes? I see a couple of people indicating a negative. I don't hear...
Motion to accept the minutes as printed for November of January 31, 2020.
Okay. Are we all good with these?
Good. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So those meeting minutes from our last meeting, January 21, 2020, are now approved and part of the official board. Next, I want to go to correspondence for a moment. I received an email that was sent through to us from one Sarah Sterns. And this email is dated January 30, 2020. And I'll read it for the record. It's brief. It says that on January 28, the Carver Planning Board voted 3-1 agreeing that map 50 lot 8, which is referenced as Zero Forest Street, meets the provisions of a rear lot in accordance with Section 2340 of the Carver zoning bylaw. With the agreement that the site meets the criteria as set forth in the bylaw from the planning board, building commissioner, and with input from the Carver Fire Department, the petitioner understands that the petition for variance via the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals is no longer necessary. The petitioner, Sun Ray's Development LLC, respectfully requests that the Board of Appeals grant a withdrawal without prejudice of the petition for variance, case number 50-8 and 10A. Please advise if anything further is needed to conclude this process. Thank you. It's signed by Sarah Sterns. So the immediate issue that this board needs to address is its response to this email, most particularly the request that its petition before us be withdrawn without prejudice. I'll take comment.
As I said in the last meeting, when we were discussing their request for a continuance, it's once again a case where they were basically permit shopping between two boards. They had concurrent applications to the planning board and the zoning board for the same project, the same end result, but needing a variance from this board in order to accomplish it or a determination that suddenly this lot was a rear lot under that bylaw and could go forward from the planning board determination. I really have an issue with this because this isn't the first time this has happened. And it ties up two boards on the same issue, both kind of waiting to see which one blinks. It requires different determinations from the building commissioner because it's the building commissioner that decides which way this goes. So the building commissioner at first initially said you need a variance for the frontage in order to access the street or access the project. In testimony, the applicant said, well, we need relief from frontage that we are simply never going to use. That was their testimony. And then when there might have been some concerns about meeting Chapter 40A and the shape of the lot arguments, an application to the planning board came forward as a rear lot. And the rear lot bylaw, in short, determines that you don't have enough frontage to access the lot, but you have enough lot. You have enough space. It's got to be three acres plus. It's got some... And so the planning board could determine that this was a rear lot based on the idea that they don't have enough access, which they're never going to use anyway. Again, a change of heart from the building commissioner. I just object to this. I think this kind of permit shopping has to cease. I don't know where we go forward with this, but my immediate impression is to grant the withdrawal with prejudice. So if they change their mind and it doesn't work out with the planning board, they can't come back here for two years. Dismissed.
May I inquire whether you had the opportunity to listen to the planning board hearing that was the subject of this case?
I did. I listened to it the next day.
Can you educate the board members, please, as to what you heard and any conclusions that you draw from it?
The conclusions that I drew from it by listening to the tape, and I invite you all to go back to that planning board tape and listen to it, is that the building commissioner had been convinced that this change could be made. Again, the building commissioner, whoever is in that seat, is the person who determines how a project should proceed according to our bylaws. A project that requires a frontage variance cannot be the same project that is going to be determined that it's a rear lot under several different guidelines at the same time. We had two. They were running concurrently. She was meeting, they were meeting with the planning board, and then they were meeting with us. So the idea that the building commissioner changed his mind, again, and this is not the first time this has happened, this, I find this disturbing. And I invite you all to go back and read that or listen to that meeting. It's just to see if you get the same read that I did. But it was simply, he had been convinced otherwise.
Further discussion?
Well, I just want to say I did not listen to the meeting, but I read the minutes of the meeting. And just the minutes gave you the sense that there was a split on the board about whether or not this really was a rear lot, but they convinced each other it was okay.
Yeah, it wasn't a unanimous vote. One planning board member did not vote for it.
So what is our option if we have a case in front of us that we know is also in front of the planning board?
Well, this is not the first time this has happened. This has happened recently, too.
This is the second time in this many years.
Yeah, this was an argument that I had with the last one, when I said they're playing both ends against the middle. I don't think we should punish the developer because somebody got the building commissioner to change his mind. But I would like to see this table until we have a chance to watch the movie, to watch the video. I'd like to see what happened at that meeting.
Table, the idea that it's withdrawn...
To take a vote on it.
Table, withdrawn. Take no action on this until the next ZBA hearing, the next ZBA meeting. Because if in fact...
I'll watch it, yeah.
You know, we should watch that video, and it'll maybe give us more insight to come back to the planning department, i.e. the building commissioner, and say, this has got to stop. How do we stop this? Because you can't play both ends against the middle.
I don't think we need to table a decision with regard to whether this matter should be withdrawn with or without prejudice. My opinion is that decision can be made tonight. We may want to table further discussion on the issue of what to do about this problem that has arisen. But I'm interested in hearing more from any other board member that would like to be heard on this before we go on to other things this evening. Does anyone else have anything further?
The only thing that I would argue is the with or without prejudice. I think that that impacts this whole project. And I personally, I'm not prepared to vote either way.
They are past us and have the approval that they need.
But if we...
And she's asking for it to be withdrawn.
Without prejudice. Until somebody wakes up to the fact that you can't get to this lot except on somebody else's property? And oh, by the way, where's that right-of-way agreement that we don't have?
Ms. Clark, was that issue discussed?
The, it was discussed, and that it was, as the applicant's representative indicated to us, that there is a road that's in the off Fuller Street. Our frontage was on Forest Street, but it's, there's access off Fuller Street, which has always been used. And, you know, they discussed perhaps papering it. But it wouldn't be an owned, it would be an easement. It would be an access easement. And part of that, when they go through site plan review, was going to entail using somebody else's property as their access. However...
Now they have a rear lot.
I come back to the point that it was determined to be a rear lot, which is based on a 40-foot access eas, or access off of Forest Street, which they agreed they were never going to use.
But could.
I suppose.
So then you got to go to conservation.
They have to go to conservation. I mean, when we have issues like this, and maybe we do need to bring in and have some kind of a joint meeting, it's one thing where a petition in front of us needs a variance for a sideline or they're building something. But they also need to go to conservation. We can always preface our permit being subject to, no building permit, is issued subject to clearing conservation. So dual boards can often be used or are often part of zoning board decisions. This was a similar situation to what we had last year, but needing a permit from one of us, either zoning or planning, and having dual applications for very different reasons and end results in both boards at the same time. Whoever says yes first.
I do not cast aspersions on the petitioner for seeking approval as best as it can find it, whether it's with us or with somebody else. However, I am concerned that when these matters go from us to another board, and that other board looks at it and appears to ignore the requirement or requirements of the bylaw in order to get to an outcome that it thinks is fair and equitable, this ignores the bylaws that are part of the town of Carver. The bylaws are there for a reason, in my opinion. And they are there to be used as guides for what developers can and cannot do under the circumstances. So when a petitioner goes from us to another board, again, that's, I cast no aspersions because they're trying to get to yes. But when that other board looks at a project and then ignores a bylaw that appears on its face to be quite plain, and then when members of the planning department here are influenced to change their decision, perhaps without cause or reason, then this becomes a concern for me. As Ms. Clark references, this is not the first time that something has left us, has gone over to another board, and that other board has decided, based on a change of a planning department's opinion, to approve something in the face of a bylaw that points in the opposite direction. Now, perhaps I'm, my legal training is getting the better of me here, but the bylaws are the laws of the town of Carver. They are there, as I said, for a reason. We cannot ignore them. And as this board has done for many years, we've had to make hard decisions in cases that maybe we would have liked to vote yes on but couldn't vote yes on because of these bylaw requirements. I'll take more comment. Anybody have anything further to say? Fran, do you have anything more that you want to say?
No, regardless of whether we vote on this tonight, and I'm ready to vote, but whether we vote on this or not tonight, I think we should all watch the tape.
I have a suggestion. And that is, we know what happened with the other board. We know that this project was approved despite the fact that there were requirements under the bylaw that we collectively viewed as preventing us from getting to a grant of a variance request. We also know that the building commissioner was influenced to change his original decision, saying no, to a yes. And I'm not quite sure how that happened or why or under what circumstances. But as Ms. Clark points out, this is not the first instance where that's occurred. So my suggestion to the board members tonight for their consideration is that at our next meeting, I mean, at our very next meeting, we make a strong request that the director of planning attend our meeting so that these concerns can be expressed on the record and so that he understands that there are issues which have developed that need to be discussed and addressed. So it's one thing to say that we're concerned and that we think this is wrong and incorrect, but I think we need to have him given the opportunity to listen to our concern, our collective concern, I think, and to respond to it in the hopes that this kind of thing does not happen again.
Can I make the suggestion that the building inspector also comes to the meeting?
You can make that suggestion.
I mean, he seems to be the one who changed his mind.
It is the planning director, and I don't disagree, who attended that meeting, did he not?
The planning board meeting? Yes.
The inspector wasn't there?
And is he not the supervisor of the building inspector?
Yes.
He's the supervisor of the planning in his building department. Is he the direct supervisor?
I think it would be fine to have the building commissioner come, but I think it's more important to have the planning director come.
But then they both hear our concerns at the same time.
Yes. We can hope that the building commissioner shows up.
He seemed willing to work with us before, correct?
I'm very optimistic. You know, I guess I have no comment on that one way or the other.
I mean, to be... I'm optimistic.
To be clear, what the building commissioner did was first determine that this required a frontage variance. They had 40 feet of frontage or 60?
Yeah, based on a clear and obvious application of the bylaw in the town of Carver. He said, no, it's, it can't, my department can't approve this. It came here, and now Sharon has related the history since it came here. I need not go through that again. They then go over to the other board, and there's talk, and there's apparently some feeling that this is a good project and we should let it go through, and maybe we shouldn't be too strict about the application of the bylaw in this case.
Well, and then the building commissioner determined that it's a rear lot, which only requires a special permit. A rear lot is a rear lot. It's just a rear. So it truly cannot be both. And that's where we need clarity.
But that's what brings me back to a withdrawal with prejudice and a draw without prejudice.
Not only do we need clarity, excuse me, just a second, Mr. Jermaine. But those who come before our board and theirs need that same clarity.
That's right.
Right? So we do this not out of any sense of jurisdictional territory. This is not what's going on here. What's going on is two things in my mind. First, we want to dedicate ourselves to appropriate application of the bylaws, which I think we have always done, at least for as long as I've been sitting. And the second thing that we need to do is to try to educate those who are in a position to make sure that this doesn't happen again, that we're aware of this issue, and that we're not happy with this kind of development, so that maybe they understand better their obligation to enforce these bylaws.
And to get it right the first time.
And to get it right the first time, as Ms. Clark...
Because they're wasting...
Six months.
Board time, they're wasting attorney time sometimes, they're wasting application money...
You're wasting staff time.
True. And I also don't want to see it as, you know, there's a lot of projects approaching the town, and I don't want to see it as a, you know, throw the spaghetti up against the wall and something will stick. So they're coming to dual boards.
I will say this again for what it's worth, and I don't like repeating myself, and we will address the issue of withdrawal with or without prejudice momentarily. But we must always be mindful as a board, and I think we all are, that sometimes people come before us who are compelling, people that we have heard from before, that we know and like and trust, perhaps. Their petitions are compelling. But if the bylaw requirement is such and such, no matter how much we might like a petition or how much we might like a petitioner, or how good we think a project might be for the town, then we're not performing our job properly in our roles as city members of the ZBA. Because in the end, we are and must always turn to appropriate application of these bylaws. So it's the old saw that we hear often, that, you know, don't get the law, don't allow the law to get in the way of something that's good. But if we don't pay attention to the bylaws in the town of Carver, then we're just going to be voting on things in an ad hoc way based on what we think is good or not. These are our guides and the guides for everybody in the town of Carver. Let's talk about withdrawal with or without prejudice tonight. Do we want to go to a vote on that? Mr. Jermaine, I know a minute ago you said that you felt that you wanted to table that.
My only issue is with or without prejudice, if we do it without prejudice, then everything is good. If we do it with prejudice, as you suggested, and they can't come back for two years, this could throw this whole project back into a tizzy if something goes wrong at the next phase of the planning. Who the hell knows what's going to happen next? I just don't know that, I suppose it doesn't make a whole big lot of difference.
Is that not the choice the petitioner made?
Yeah.
To go with the other board?
It is. You're right. That was the spaghetti against the wall.
If something happened in the ensuing few months where this project doesn't get off the ground?
Same on me.
Is that our responsibility?
No.
And it's not that they can't come before the board, they have to show substantial changes. It cannot be substantially the same reason they were before the board before. And I don't know whether I'm just feeling like I need to make this as an example for future permit shoppers.
I guess my question of you all is this. Of what use would it be to the petitioner in this case to have this matter withdrawn without prejudice when it already has approval of its permit request in its pocket? Is it because perhaps they think that maybe something could go awry in the next few months and maybe this project is not going to get off the ground? Is that why this request is being made? Or is it just being made on a pro forma basis, which is basically, everybody asks for withdrawals without prejudice, so we're going to ask for a withdrawal without prejudice as well? For me, there has to be a reason.
My, certainly my guess would be that it's everyone always ask, and you just cover that base in the event that further on down the line. I'm still denying withdrawal with prejudice or without prejudice and granting withdrawal with prejudice.
Okay. Mr. Poirier, do you have any comments to make on the with or without prejudice issue?
No, ma'am. This is all kind of new to me, so I'm just sort of...
You're a voting member tonight.
I understand.
I'm split on it. I agree with, I do agree with Sharon. I just, I hate to, there's a double side of the coin. There's the developmental part of the coin, and it's good for Carver, but there's the lesson learned coin, and that's where you're coming from. And I don't disagree at all, because I was kicking and screaming the last time we had this, we had an issue before this board in the upstairs.
I recall.
Oh.
Fran, who do you want to do as to the request for withdrawal this evening?
I would like to vote on it this evening. We've been on this case for how long?
Six months.
Long time.
All right. So do I hear a motion?
I will if you want. Go ahead.
He wouldn't ask the question unless he knew the answers. I move that we allow a withdrawal with prejudice for this case.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to send a communication to both the planning director and the building commissioner for our next meeting?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion with regard to that?
I think it's a great idea.
Do we want to preface it with our concerns? Should one or the other of us write it or...
I think there has to be some sort of written communication. And it's got to be drafted, I would think, either by the chair or the vice chair, with copies to everybody before a final draft is sent out.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it needs to be firmly phrased that we require your attendance at the meeting. They rarely come to our meetings, as you know. I mean, rarely. This is a time, I think, that it's necessary so that we can get this issue sorted out.
Well, if we're in the, if we're going to do that, do we want to look at a date?
We already have a date.
You want to do it on the 24th of March? That's what we have for the next meeting.
Of course.
So we'll do it from March 24th?
At our very next meeting.
Okay.
And Sharon, would you want to try your hand at pinning a short... Sharon, would you want to try your hand at pinning a short email, perhaps? I don't even think it needs to be, I guess it can be on our letterhead, but something relatively brief, saying that we have some current concerns that need to be addressed following the handling of case number-
You could call it zero four three-
Fifty dash A.
Fifty dash eight and ten A. And we'll, we'll edit this before it goes out, so you can put it together.
I'll put it together, and then I'll send it to you.
Are you, are we sending a communication letter to the planning director and the building inspector, just to put it in?
Yes, thank you. What does everybody think about that?
And this does not involve, like, sending it to the chair of the planning board? We'll just do the planning director?
No, you know, I, I don't think it's necessary, because these cases, when they, when they're reviewed, they come first to the planning department. Right? So, what the planning board has done is done, and, you know, we're not going to, I think at this stage, have to communicate with them specifically about this case and the decision that they made on this case, with them. But with the planning department, so that we can get ahead of the, ahead of the problem, before it even gets to the board.
I agree with that. So just the two?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, as everybody knows quite well here, we don't see any cases until after they've already passed the review process of the planning department. This is the way we want it, this is the way it should be. We are, after all, in appellate board. We review decisions that are made by the planning department. So, I think it's important to go back to the origin of when these decisions are being made, and get an understanding, a better understanding as to why decisions get reversed, and why concurrent boards are hearing the same thing. Ms. Clark makes all good points, in my view. And I know each of you, from time to time, except Mr. Poirier, who is new, have expressed concerns about this. So this is not a new issue for us, it's not anything that we're churning out here for the first time. Up there?
Yep.
Everybody fair?
We have to vote.
You what?
We have to vote.
Yes, we do. That was the discussion before.
Thank you, sorry. I just don't want to move on.
So, the, the motion was to invite the building commissioner and the planning director to our next meeting, and that the vice chair will draft a short note that all of us will review before it gets sent out.
You don't include March 24th?
Well, next meeting-
Can you check the meeting, can you check your meeting calendar at the town hall? It's just that if the planning board is meeting that night, then-
They're, they're meeting, they have a meeting March 24th.
They're meeting March 24th.
Okay, so we have to do a special meeting.
Right, so you won't get the-
We won't get the planner.
That's correct. Good thought, I didn't think of that. That's why you're the vice chair.
She should be sitting over here.
So do we want to look at another day?
So let's look at our calendars, yes, we need to look at another date, people.
Before?
Whichever works for people.
Do you want to try?
All that's on that calendar is joint select board and school committee, so they haven't put the planning, but you said the planning board is on that date, and you would know, so.
Do you know if we have any more cases right now that are coming?
To my knowledge, there are no other cases currently in the pipeline. I am a score the word currently, though, because that could change tomorrow or the next day.
Yeah, it would have to be in.
I know there's one that they think might come in, but it, it's not quite ready to be sent to us.
We could move it to March 31st.
I'm not here.
Well, that's right, too. We went through this the last time, you're wearing Bora Bora or something, that's right.
Is there any problem with, maybe the Wednesday?
Seventeen, oh, the twenty-fifth?
No, the twenty-fifth.
I'm not here.
That was the issue, because she's flying around the world, so we had to do it the 24th. How about the 18th?
The 18th.
Wednesday, the 18th.
Wednesday, the 18th.
I mean, it should be a breeze.
I could have conservation that night, I, how about the 17th?
St. Patrick's Day? I, I have our date, but that's at 5:30.
Who's going to bring the green beer?
Honest to God, I mean, it's St. Patrick's, it's not like it's Christmas.
No, no.
No disrespect to the Irish people, but-
Don't look at me, I'm a-
You have to call it.
It's a good thing my wife's not here. I go right at you when I'm-
Seventeenth and fifteenth.
Does March 17th work for folks?
Yep.
You can, we agreed if it-
Do you know if it's the planning board's meeting that night, is there any other?
Well, they wouldn't if it was the 24th, because that's the week before. So you might have the selectmen on that night, but-
Does that mean we're moving our meeting from the 24th to the 17th?
I'm not sure if they have, they talk about, okay, bylaws, but I don't have things-
We're keeping both, Sharon.
Oh, we are keeping the 24th?
Okay.
Do you have the list of the bylaws that you brought, brought me? The new bylaws proposal?
The date should be-
The dates are of the public hearings.
Let's say, the 10th should be 11th.
So you said you're going to keep the two dates, we're going to end mine?
Um, okay, it's the 3rd, 4th, 10th, and 11th.
So we're good on the 17th for this meeting?
This meeting, yeah.
Surrounding this particular issue. And then we, and scheduled, as Mr. Jermaine recalls, a meeting on the 24th. And that was for what?
That was when they asked for, they asked for two months. Remember, they asked for two months?
Who's they?
No, they asked for a month, well, they asked for, to continue to our next meeting, and we pushed it out two meetings to try and give them a choice of-
So now that meeting for the 24th seems unnecessary.
It's, it's unnecessary unless we get a new case in the next-
Right, two weeks. So let's, let's keep the date of March 17th, and we will cancel the meeting for March 24th. Does that seem reasonable to everybody?
Yes. Because that's what it was, it was, we want, if she, we had gone to one month, they wouldn't have had enough time, there was a, it could have been a conflict of a time thing with planning, so we pushed it out two months.
Okay, so-
Okay, so that's done.
We voted on-
We set the date, we, and we voted on-
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet. We've set a date, we've set invitations.
And who's going to be the owner of the invitation?
I'm going to write it, you will fix it.
So this is the 17th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next matter before us this evening is case number 1-15-0R, the petitioner being Robert Andrews III. Which is Robert Andrews III? Thank you for being patient with us.
No problem at all.
And Mr. Andrews III is requesting a special permit pursuant to section 2320 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located in Fort Andrews Point Road in Carver, Sessos Map 1-Lot 15-0R, to raise an existing porch, to raise, not uplift, but to destroy, and rebuild with a new addition on the existing footprint, being 25.4 feet from the side yard when 30 is required, in a residential agricultural district. Now, before I get going, is this a special permit, is this a variance?
Well, let's see what our building commissioner decided it was going to be.
Probably nothing.
Is this your handwriting?
It is.
Okay.
So we have nothing from the building?
We have nothing from the building, so?
Nope.
That's awesome.
And what did he say?
He didn't say anything, so when I brought the application down there, I dropped it off at the, you know, when you drop off all of the, I'm sorry, for the rec, I needed to see Katsalski from Webb Engineering. I prepared the application of plans for Mr. Andrews.
Can you say my name?
K O T O W S K R.
You want mine?
Yeah. Webb Engineering. And so, we brought the plans down to the permitting department at the town hall, in expectation that we would get a denial, because that's what it says on the checklist. And after a week had gone by, I called down, and Mr. Andrews was here, is all things going? And then I spoke to, I can't remember the woman's name, but she says, "Oh, no, we don't do that anymore, you just go right to the Board of Appeals." So, I went next door to the-
Oh, put that on the agenda?
I know, and I, I, I thought of that as you were having your discussion earlier, you know, again, maybe some of the differences of process with the town hall, but that was the process we were told.
Okay, so, not to interrupt, but for the education of those who may be watching at home, this is an appellate board, which means that cases come to us after review by the planning department, and after decisions have been made by the planning department. We have very few matters on which we have direct jurisdictional authority, meaning that as soon as something is filed, it goes directly to the ZBA. One of those, by the way, is when someone's appealing the issuance of the building permit, that comes directly to us right away. But these sorts of matters should be reviewed first by the planning department. And so I feel badly that you didn't get much direction when you went down there, so, except my understanding about that. You just sat through our previous discussion here. And so they just took your paperwork and said, "See you later," and then go to the ZBA.
Took your paperwork and your check, and-
We got notification of the year.
All right, so now we have no indication as to what any decision was from the building department or the planning department, in a larger sense. Is that true?
No, this is true, like I said, I-
And so you put 2320 for dimensional?
Correct, yeah.
So that would be asking for a variance.
Right, and so, when I saw this, I'm thinking, something here has gone awry in the process, because I would like to think that our planning department would have had the correct relief on the application, that they would have put that down. And so now we have a problem with the advertising, and this is an issue that's, that's happened at least once before in my memory. I invite comment from the board as to how it wants to proceed at this point.
We also have, did they send you a conservation?
We haven't done it yet, we figured, based on my experience, this would be the first board to go through. I know there are issues, that's why the plan was prepared.
We are a lovely board, by the way. People like to come before us.
I'll let you use that description.
Can you pull up 2320?
The notice says, special permit.
The publication.
Yeah, and we determined special permit.
I didn't, usually, on your application, it has, I believe, it says special permit variance, and I, I believe I just left it blank, because I think it says special permit slash variance, right?
So...
On the, the first page of the application.
Is that this?
At least, okay. It usually say, yeah, I use the dimensional table as the variance that we're seeking.
So you, you were seeking a variance?
It may be necessary for me to fall on my sword a little bit here, but they, they send me these agendas for approval, before they're posted. And so, I don't know anything about these cases, when they come to me. I'm not supposed to know anything, because they are, again, they're coming to us on an appellate basis, so we don't want to know anything that's happened in town hall first. So I just looked at this, it seemed like, you know, this was something that the planning department had made a decision on, and we went ahead and posted this. So, perhaps part of this is my responsibility for not catching this when it went into the paper. So again, I invite comment from the board as to how it wishes to proceed this evening.
Can I ask your question?
Do you want to go to the merits, or do you feel as if there's a procedural irregularity here?
I have a question.
Yes.
This is, nothing's changing? You're taking this down and putting up exactly what's there in the exact same footprint?
What's there is a, is a two-story porch, if I may, just show, to help, show what's there.
Might help, yeah.
You can see, this is what is there, there's a porch with a porch on top, and the setback relief is from this exterior projection to the property line. What Mr. Andrews wants to do is basically put walls around the bottom section of this, so you have the same porch on the top, and then this is going to get blocked off. So it's, again, it is in the same footprint that's there, he's not expanding, not going any closer. When we surveyed the property intending to go to the conservation commission, that's when we discovered that the existing footprint was less than the 30 feet from the sideline setback, so, brought it, brought it down to the building department to try to get their opinion, you know, it's kind of left, you know, to-
Did you get an opinion?
No, no, we, we-
I'm not talking about a written opinion, you had a verbal opinion?
We didn't get anything, like I said, we went down-
Did you meet with a building inspector?
Not on this matter, I spoke to him on a couple different things that day, and-
Did you, did you intend to speak to him and just forgot to bring it up?
When I went down there, like I said, the, the, the way that they do things at the town hall is you have to go to that, that, pretty much anything that goes submitted to the town now has to go to that, that, you know, it handles all of the applications now for the town, whether it go to the planning department, or the building department, conservation, pretty much everything goes, you're not allowed to go into any of the other departmental places. Everything gets submitted at one location.
So why did you not bring this up when you brought your other two projects in?
Well, like I said, the other projects are, actually, I was supposed to be at the planning board right now at seven o'clock, another conflict of scheduling, where I asked them if I could get this scheduled a little bit later, and I called this morning, they said, "Oh, you're at seven o'clock, but come on up whenever you get done downstairs."
You're intending to go to the conservation commission, correct?
Correct, yes.
And are you scheduled there?
We haven't filed, no, we haven't filed with them yet, again, just-
Is there some strategy about not filing with them just yet?
Strategy would be, knowing my experience with this board, and you're getting a little chuckle here, is that, you know, usually you folks are sometimes the more difficult board to go for, and I mentioned that to Mr. Andrews, as far as how sometimes these things get, you know, a little confusing between, is this a special permit, is this a var-? I, I've been before you folks on a few different occasions, and this seems to be, you know, a reoccurring nightmare, is, you know, the conversation always comes up, is this a special permit, is it a variance? And that's why I thought on the application where it kind of leaves it vague, whether it is a special, it's, you know, application for a special permit slash variance. So again, I, I'm familiar with, and I know that the procedure is that you, you know, you go down to the town, you get the file, it says clearly in the application, however, again, when I brought it down there, they said, "That's not required." We don't, we don't do that anymore, and go straight to the board.
Yeah, I'm not seeing-
We, we don't have any part that's-
Maybe it's on the cover letter where it's, it gives you news. Can you see that? I think it may be, I, I think it's actually on the package that you get on the town website, and it kind of goes through with the processes, that says that you're supposed to go to the building department, get a letter, you know, to just include the-
But you're, you're talking about a letter, right?
A letter of denial.
We have to get a denial letter, and on the denial letter would be written, where it was signed by the building commissioner, and, and they still use these.
Right, but-
But it would say, it's, the reason it's being denied is for section 2320, side lot, or the reason it's being denied is for a special permit, because you're taking down a porch and putting up a room.
I understand that, and like I said, in the past, we've usually gotten a denial letter, and then have, you know, and, and also in other towns, but again, like I said, when I went down there, they made it sound like, "We don't do that anymore."
What do you mean, "They made it sound like"? Did they say, "We don't do this anymore"?
That's what they said, yeah, in so many words, they said, "We don't, we don't, we don't give you a denial."
Again, not in so many words, did they tell you, "We don't do that anymore"?
Yes, yes.
But it was, the secretaries at the planning department, right?
At the, whatever department that is.
The building commissioners would, right?
Right, but they also handle, if you know, for the board of health, or, I mean, it's just one-
It is.
It's one place, you know, one stop shop, I don't know who I'm speaking to, if she works for the building department, the board of health, or the, you know, gas department, you know, I don't, I don't know, they just come up to the town through-
We have another process issue, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We also-
So the question is, and hold that thought, the question is, do we hold these folks hostage this evening over the process issue that we've just identified, that he's just identified for us? Or do we move forward on the merits? Now, the publication gives everyone in the Town of Carver a, a very good understanding of what it is that you're requesting. It identifies the property, it identifies the pertinent bylaw section, and what it is, as I said, that the project consists of. Are we satisfied that this notice that went out to the town, and the people in the town, is sufficiently specific that we can get to a comfort level moving forward with this tonight? Or does the board feel as if republication needs to occur in an actual denial issue from the building commissioner or the planning department? from the building commissioner or the planning department? That's the decision we need to make at the threshold.
Well, I think enough notice was given to the town because it was very specific to raise an existing porch and rebuild, or actually build, a new addition.
Even though it's a zone, it's a, it's a variance request rather than a special permit.
Well, it says special permit, but the section 2320 only requires variance.
It should have referenced variance, right, but you're okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Because the rest of it is sufficiently...
The rest of it, they're very specific, so...
Okay. Now, with regard to the issue of us being an appellate board, having to make a decision after the planning department has issued its decision, another process issue, do we take this basically on direct appeal? Do we have the authority to do that? Do we need that letter of denial?
Well, we functioned without them. They've been missing off and on for a bit. So I think if the public notice is sufficient and this application is sufficient, I think it, I think it would be onerous for us to hold up the applicant when this is an administrative If there was something really different between these two and we didn't have the denial letter, I would, I would say perhaps we need to investigate it and republish. But if we're going to accept the publication notice, then I think we have to accept the idea that this is, this is sufficient for us now.
Other comment? You were at conservation for an informal discussion, because I remember this picture.
I went on my own.
Yeah, okay. I remember you showing this to the, to the conservation commission. And I also recall, informally, the attitude, and I'm not sure if that applies here, because it's existing, they, informally, conservation didn't have an issue because we weren't growing.
Well, you're getting to the merits of the case.
So, but, and, well, then you can go back to that discussion there, and, but that's my same point here. It's already there.
Okay. So that, that's a point with regard to the merits, and it's a good point, but I want to talk about the threshold issues first. Are we satisfied, first of all, that the public notice is sufficiently explicit and gives the town of Carver citizens an awareness of what is being proposed here? Because that's the purpose behind the publication.
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, if we're past that issue, the next issue is, do we need a denial from the planning department before we can exercise our jurisdictional authority?
I'm going to say no because we've operated without one on a regular basis.
What?
We haven't had one for every case that's come before us. It's not attached. We'll ask the, ask the applicants, "Did you go see them?" And this is what they told him. This gentleman is telling us that he never even spoke with them, which I think is a little bit more of an issue. But I think, I think it, we're okay to go with this on now.
Does the, does the issue of not having a denial bother anybody here at this table?
Well...
Not specific to this case necessarily?
As far as buildings go, I, and you know what? We've had a lot of different things, and you've sat on the board much, much longer. But I thought we always get, you know, denied must go to ZBA.
Aren't we an appeals board? Appeal what?
Right.
No disrespect, you, you, you have any discussions with the building department?
Yeah, the building inspector will always say, you know, denied based upon blah, blah, blah.
That's the way we work on your permit.
If I could interrupt, I mean, that's exactly what I said when I went down there. I mean, you know, mostly it makes our job easier, too. I don't want to be the one that fills in which section of the bylaw that we require, and when we dropped off the application and everything, it sat down there for a week. And again, I'm just, you know, explaining what happened is that, you know, we were told we didn't require that. I thought that maybe this was just something that you as the board or the town said, "We're going to try to streamline this process. If we have an application that comes forward where the applicant clearly identifies that he needs a variance slash special permit, whichever it is, which is the case, then they make that determination on their own." And so that's, again, procedurally, I understand, and I, we've always come before and gotten a denial and expected to get one, and to leave everything down there for a week expecting to get something back. It just sat there for a week, and it wasn't until I called up and said, "Okay, you know, what's going on?" And they said, "Well, we don't do that anymore." I had to go down, pick up the application, fill it out myself, and bring it back to the board of appeals with the package.
Just thought it wasn't signed.
Well, that's no surprise.
Sorry, but it's not.
Yeah? Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, just a, before I lose this, because it's been a long day for me. And then you can have the floor for as long.
I don't want the floor for as long as I want.
Did you, did you say that you had a date that you were thinking about going to the conservation commission, or did you just defer that completely because you wanted to get over this hurdle first?
You said it. That's exactly. We wanted to get through this hurdle first and, you know, give the, you know, give the board of appeals a little bit extra time to consider...
Mr. Jermaine, you're a member, a sitting member of the conservation commission. When is your next meeting?
Wednesday, a week from tomorrow.
Is it possible to get them on the agenda for then?
Sure, if you want to file an NOI.
No, it's not. We have to advertise in the paper for two consecutive weeks, just like you folks. We have to notify the abutters. We can't...
That's right. That's right. He would have to notify the abutters.
So when would be the next meeting after that?
Be two weeks after that.
I'm sorry, I just don't understand what the relevance to that, two separate issues. We have other issues that are before the conservation commission, too, that are more with patio and landscape and things.
You've heard a, I think, a pretty sharp discussion tonight about our issues with the way this was handled for you folks and our proper role in the review process. Okay, so if you're not understanding, I'm sorry. I thought we were pretty clear on what our issues were with regard to the process here. We have an unsigned and apparently unrevealed application, and you're asking us to exercise appellate authority. And it's problematic for us. You may be thinking that, you know, we should just ignore the process, but we went through a discussion, as you sat through, where we can't ignore process, we can't ignore bylaws, we can't ignore the rules, no matter how compelling it might be to ignore them in a particular circumstance. I'm just one vote. You guys, you know, you guys have to kind of decide how you want to deal with this because they have to go before the conservation commission.
But I don't understand how they can come to an appeals board when they haven't been denied anything. What are they appealing? Am I confused?
Then if I could, if I may ask, then would it be acceptable if we say on the record that we are applying for a variance because we understand that we need a variance and...
I think we're past that issue. I think we're okay with that.
Okay. So is the applicant or representative of the applicant, tonight we're here...
Mr. Jermaine, can you repeat for the applicant what you just said about how, how we can review something that hasn't been...
Well, I don't, I don't understand. This is the zoning board of appeals. You come here when somebody, when another department said no, this is your relief.
Sure.
No other department has said no to anything. In fact, I'm not even sure that the building department can't grant this permit because it's in the exact same footprint of what's sitting there right now, except we're closing in. So I'm, I mean, we're splitting hairs, but we're not going to gain any, any footprint enlargement. It's not going to encroach on the pond any closer or to the lot line any closer. If he does nothing until the house literally falls down 200 years from now, that porch is exactly where it is in relation to the pond. I'm not sure that the building department can't just give you the okay to build this addition with a variance that you would need from conservation because they'd want to know how, you know, where's the machine going? Going to dig the foundation? You need silt fence and all that stuff. But I don't think this is even a ZBA issue. I could be wrong. You guys are much better at this than I, but...
Well, I guess what he's trying to say is that if you go and have this reviewed, as it should have been in the first place, through no fault of your own, then you may not ever have to come back and say, "Hello, we're back."
And again, and just for the record, I wasn't trying to say that I was asking you to disregard your bylaw and the purpose of you being here. I just couldn't understand where the conservation commission and us having to go before them first came into play before, you know...
Because you're going to have to get past that board anyway.
Sure.
So I'm thinking that if you begin that process with them, you don't lose any time, and then eventually you come back before us if need be.
I will say...
I'm not necessarily on board with that.
Well, I will say from sitting on both boards that typically anyone that has to go before, to do a project that goes before planning, and sometimes planning ends up at ZBA, usually the permitting process begins upstairs, and the very first place, they look at the, at the drawing, and they say, "Oh, yeah, this is going to have to go to conservation because of this wetlands." They always send you to conservation first and get that hurdle out of the way because that's the easiest of the hurdles to deal with. And then you go to planning, and then if planning says no, you come to ZBA and so...
So that was the reason why?
That's the normal flow of things.
But I don't mean to be argumentative, but if you look under the Wetlands Protection Act, it also says that we're supposed to get all of the local jurisdictional Stein offs before we end up at conservation. That's, we deal with that all the time.
Is that a requirement, or is that, or is that a recommendation?
In the town of Plymouth where I live, if you go to the zoning, if you go to the conservation commission without going to zoning board first, they won't even let you go.
Well, we're not the town of Plymouth, and I don't know what the regulation is here with regard to the order of things.
That's just the way we do it.
It's in, it's in the Wetlands Protection Act. It's, it assumes all other jurisdictional...
Every single project with an NOI number comes before conservation, and then it goes off to wherever else it's going. That's just the way we do it.
So I guess what he's saying is that things are done differently here. I don't know this because we're not part of the conservation commission as he is, but that's an option for you. You can at least get the process going with them, get whatever approvals you might need. You go back to the planning department here, you have them take a look at it, determine whether you actually need that extra few feet. And if you do, you do. You come back with a denial, and if you don't, then you don't have to come back before us at all.
Because the fact is, not to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, the fact is, is that if we sit here tonight and grant you 15 variances for this, and conservation says, "No, you can't do it," then you're done. There's a lawsuit if you want to go that route, but we can't overrule, ZBA can't overrule conservation. That's the end-all when it comes to that pond.
No, the ZBA condition could be upon approval of the...
Right, of course. But I'm saying, if conservation says absolutely not, no way, then, you know, it's a civil matter at that point.
Ms. Mello, your thoughts?
I think we understand that and accept that. We're just trying to, as you know, you remember me for some...
Right, I do. I was looking at this, and I said, "I know I've seen that picture before."
So I guess we're just struggling a little bit with how to find our way through the process. I thought I would do this on my own, kind of informally, found out that it was really best to get some engineering resource involved. Did that with Steve and Webby Engineering, and then...
And both of you are articulate and...
Yeah, really.
Effective advocates. I want you both to understand that.
But I think this...
I think that you've been victimized by a process that should have occurred in this case that didn't occur.
Yeah.
Which now calls into question our jurisdictional authority because we have no basis to review something that hasn't been reviewed. And we, we need that, that basis, that initial decision, either yes or no, whatever it is.
You can't appeal a non-decision.
Fran, do you have a question or comment that you'd like to share with the rest of us? I'm interested in your thoughts.
I, I agree. It hasn't been denied. Maybe nothing was done with the application because it wasn't signed.
No, like I said, that wasn't the issue. What I was told is that they just don't do it anywhere.
But it's not a contract if it's not signed.
It never got anywhere. Just like I said, it sat down at the department.
I feel badly for these guys.
I do, too.
Mr. Correa, do you have any questions or comments?
No, it seems like a, not the same, but a similar issue to what we were discussing before about the order in which things should get done.
It's a, it's a cousin of that issue, it seems to me. Yes. Ms. Clark?
Well, I'm looking at the application again, and has an application for a building permit been filed? Is filing the same as bringing in the building permit, I mean, applying for the building permit, and that's the part that gets denied?
Well, I would think so, but, and I know in some cases, we've gone down just with a copy of the plan, expecting that we're going to need a denial. We get a denial, it just says, you know, we have to review in the plan.
Right, right, right. After, yeah.
You know, they decide that you don't meet the requirements under whichever specific section of the bylaw, and then that's adequate to file with the application to the ZBA. Yeah, and you can see, again, down at the bottom, I put that on you with, you know...
Ms. Clark, sure.
That was, you know, when I was hoping to get the denial letter from...
You get it from us. You get it from, yeah, I mean...
From the permitting department.
Right.
I have to say to both of you again that neither one of you has done anything wrong or incorrect here.
Appreciate it.
Neither one of you has...
I think you've been misled.
Well, I don't know misled, I mean, something that should have happened.
We're confused in the process.
It did not happen.
It sounds like you're taking action to deal with this.
You're going to try to.
It's, they have the superior knowledge. When you go to the counter or you go to the planning department, they're supposed to be the one that, even though you're extremely experienced in Carver, but you, if you brought this plan to the planning department, they're supposed to review it, and they're supposed to have the superior knowledge as to what is...
They must have come in.
They're probably waiting upstairs.
Waiting for who upstairs?
Mr....
Because, yeah.
He had the...
Planning meeting.
He's got to go upstairs.
...with planning.
So...
So, Mr. Andrews, what, what would you like for us to do?
You need to go upstairs.
I need to go upstairs. I'm sorry. It doesn't sound like we have much further to do.
And again, I want to thank you for your input. This was enlightening.
You can give those, Mr. Andrews, he brought them with him tonight.
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get this straightened out.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Andrews, who is now caught in this...
Yes.
No fault of his own.
I think what would help me obviously a great deal is where it sounds like your board has seen this sort of issue in the past, you're making plans to deal with it. I'm thinking, hoping my, my particular request is minor in nature compared to some of the things you probably see. If you could see fit to, to give me approval here, that would help me a lot, and that I would take the next step, which would be go to conservation, because I recognize that that would be a next step.
Today is February 25th.
5th.
Our next meeting is March 17th.
17th.
It's in three weeks.
Are you available for that meeting? Can I make a suggestion?
Of course.
I think we should continue this till the 17th. They won't have time to see conservation, but they certainly can file the NOI.
Sure.
We can do a hearing while conservation's in, I mean, that's, that's standard with us. My suggestion would be to, one of us send a letter to the building department, the building commissioner and the planner, outlining this very specific situation, that we don't have a denial letter, we felt the application was incomplete, and probably you and I...
You will draft such a letter. You will draft such a letter.
Finessing the language.
You will draft it.
I will draft the letter, but explaining how the Board of Appeals as an appellate board has to operate. And that means we have to have a denial letter in order for them to appeal this application. And I will scan it, so they will have it in front of them.
I am frustrated for you.
Oh, I'm extremely frustrated for you, because as you understand, it's not the first time. And I, if I had gone to a board and I don't know enough, but I expect them to guide.
Guide, yes.
I've always said this, they have the superior knowledge in the planning department and the building department, and they're supposed to tell the person, the citizen, the constituent who comes into the town hall to be told what you need to know. These are very confusing. Our bylaws can be very confusing.
But we have people that know these bylaws.
But we have people, this is their job.
You know, you should have been, they should have looked at this and said, you have to go to the zoning board of appeals, hold on, and they should have signed off and denied this...
Right, right.
...to give you a place to go next.
And review it so that it's...
Or not. Or not. They could have said, this is not going to change, we can issue this permit, there's no need of a variance. Your next step now would be conservation. Or they could have said, we don't see a problem with this at all from our standpoint, go see what happens with conservation, then come on back. But they wouldn't have said, you know, they wouldn't have sent, they should never have sent you in different directions.
Oh, with no guidance at all.
With no guidance at all. This says the application for a building permit been filed? No. Well, if there's been no building permit filed, then how can the zoning board of appeals take up the matter? What are we appealing?
Filed or denied.
Or denied, exactly.
Or denied.
There's nothing there.
We're not trying to give you the runaround, but this is, and I'm very frustrated for you all.
You know, one hand, I heard the proceedings, and I can see that this board is frustrated with similar cousins of this. But from my standpoint, you know, I'm trying to find my way through. It was very clear doing this on my own with conservation wasn't going to work well. I don't have the, you know, the correct knowledge, so I engaged with Webby Engineering to do some work. We think we're doing the right thing, and we're still not. So, yes, it's frustrating.
And through no fault of your own, I think that the board, again, understands this. We're three weeks away from our next meeting. Is there a time sensitivity to the project that you would be presenting to us?
I can present. From my standpoint, I'm ready to go.
Not tonight, but, I mean, would you be ready, strike that? Is there anything that, about this project that you believe you need a virtual immediate decision on? Or can it wait three weeks until we come back?
I can wait three weeks, as long as we can...
In my scope.
Be on a path.
Well, and on the bright side, if I may, Mr. Chairman, conservation will have the 4th, and conservation will also have the 18th. So that's the day after our next meeting, which you may not even have to be here for. So into the, in a worst-case scenario, if you can avoid coming back here because they've decided upstairs that they can do this, you can still do your notifications and have a conservation decision by the 18th. You could have your NOI and all that stuff done by the 18th. You should still try to come in on the 4th, get on the agenda again for an informal discussion, let the board know what's going on. If you do have to come back here for the variance, if it's determined upstairs you get no, and you come down here, now we have an appeal that we can act on because it's been denied. So you went upstairs and lost, now you can come back down here and appeal. And if we grant that on the 17th, if we can wrap it up that night, you still have the very next day you could be on the agenda for the 18th in conservation. You could get this, almost a one-stop shop, we could get it done in that week.
Okay.
So...
Now, can I leave tonight assuming that this board will kind of flesh out a decision by the building commissioner, or is that something Steve and I need to do?
Oh, I think Sharon's going to...
I think Sharon's going to have it. Ms. Clark, who has a sharp pen, will make sure that you get the either acceptance or denial that you require for us to be able to assume jurisdiction.
Is there a copy of this plan with the building department yet?
I believe so, but Steve would need to answer that.
Okay.
I'm almost betting my, there's no jacket on this whole thing. Did somebody write them a check?
Oh, yeah. I wrote two checks.
Well, and they were probably for here, it was the...
I have a board file.
Oh, you do?
With a plan in it.
So it's the planning board file? I mean, it's on file.
Yeah, and there's many copies in there. I guess some of these were supposed to be given to us, but I'm not going to pass them out yet.
No, they go to the police department...
Right, right. Fire department.
But there's been no denial, so...
So that file...
We've already, we're past that. We know this.
Where does this file get returned to?
It gets returned to the planning department.
Okay, so they have it, and they will reference. I will make sure of that.
You've got the sharp pen.
I do.
She does.
Thank you.
We will make sure that you get the approval or the denial that you need. I'm making no comment about the merits of this project. It would be inappropriate for us to do that, but we will make sure that the process works for you. Are you okay?
So you want a motion to continue?
We're going to do two motions. First of all, do I hear a motion to have the vice chair write a letter instructing the planning department to make a decision on this matter? And I think we should put a date in there for Mr. Andrews so that we know that this doesn't sit on somebody's desk for another week or two.
Yeah, I want it by next Wednesday.
By next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Okay.
Give them a week.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it. I'd like to add that we include the case number 1-15-OR.
Yes, I'll make reference to the case file.
I also would add to that, or suggest that the draft of whatever Ms. Clark is going to send be circulated amongst us before it goes out.
Yep.
So, having made that motion, do I hear a second?
I second.
Who made the motion?
Fran.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now we need to...
Motion to continue?
No, because there's nothing before us.
Well, it was on the agenda.
No, we opened the case.
We opened the case, it was on the agenda.
We did, we did open it now that you mentioned it.
So we will continue this.
So we have to continue it?
We're taking it under advisement.
We're going to continue the case, no action.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's going to be continued to the date of March 17th.
I'll make that motion and...
What day of the week is that again? I'm sorry.
Tuesday. It's case number 1-15-OR. Continued to March 17th, take no action.
Was there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. So in the meantime, Mr. Andrews, it has been suggested that you do what you need to do to get on the conservation commission docket, so that if you do need to come back here, you might be able to wrap everything up within a 48-hour period, the 17th and the 18th.
So if denied, I'll see you on the 17th.
Right, if not, then you're going to see them on the 18th.
Yeah. But I would also, if you want to come in for a little informal thing on the 4th, keep an eye on the Cogge website, because they haven't posted the date yet, but as far as I know, it's the 4th is conservation. So, but you've already been in with that, too, so...
And we have enough time to get on the agenda for the 18th.
You have plenty of time to get on it for the 18th. I would, no matter what, I would get yourself on it for the 18th so you can get the proper filings and the abutters notices and all that. File the NOI.
I'll talk with Steve later.
Yeah, tell Steve to file the NOI.
I see a clear path for you to have appropriate determinations made by both boards if necessary within 30 days.
Yeah.
So that's pretty good. So I know, I know you're disappointed that you're not getting anything from us tonight, but that's still pretty good.
If I'm good in 30 days, I'm a happy guy.
Well, we want to make it happen.
It's hard to find your way through this process.
It is.
Especially when some of these people that are staffing the planning department, casting most persons on them are part-timers. So work does tend to pile up sometimes, doesn't get reviewed perhaps as timely as maybe it should. There's vacations that enter in. Again, I'm not making excuses, it is what it is, and this experience for you could have been much better. But, you know, we'll make sure that for you this next time it works.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your patience.
Thanks again. So we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, you one way, the other.
All right, so that concludes the only listed case on our agenda for this evening. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add before we close the meeting this evening?
Motion to adjourn?
Any further discussion about anything? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.